Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 9th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee. At this point, I would like to officially call the meeting to order and ask that you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Thank you. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for joining us on this live stream virtual reality. It is becoming a very virtual reality world for us these days. But before we start and before we do introductions, I wanted to do a few things. You may not see on our agenda that we have a public forum comment section, but we all do with the virtual program. We now do it at the end of our meeting. So before we close the meeting, but I believe that it has been posted, the phone number of the Zoom meeting where you can call in. You'll be held on the line until our public forum is open, but then you can use that opportunity to say something. I believe it's on Facebook. If it's someplace else, I'll open my chat and Jesse will tell me in the chat. But I am very appreciative of everybody's efforts. I particularly want to, again, before we get started, say thank you to our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, our leadership team, our teachers, our staff, our family, and even the students themselves. I know every day has been really, really tough for folks and everybody's learning something every day, but we've made learning a priority here at Blackstone Millville, and that's been a huge difference. I don't know if you all know it out there, but we really have been the model for a lot of people in the state. I know that that's tough for people. I get that, but I am so proud of this district. I can't say enough of how we are leading by example and how everybody is doing their part, even if it's their part to stay in the house. And I know that our seniors are frustrated, our eighth graders are frustrated, our fifth graders are frustrated, but we're in this together and everybody puts a smile on their face and is sharing the best good news. I know our seniors are going to share some of their own good news with us today, but people are working hard and I truly, truly appreciate it. And I can't thank you all enough. I know that that seems pretty simple just to say thanks. I wish I could do something more, but I think we are a phenomenal district. And so having said that, I would like to introduce the people who are the school committee members who are proud to represent this district. So I am Jane Reggio, the Chair of the Committee from Millville, Massachusetts. And I don't care who goes next, so just jump in.
Jack Keefe, Blackstone.
Erin Larkin, Millville.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Erin Finaco, Millville.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Matt Errenworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
And then Cassie and Jacob are here with us today, and I'm so very excited to see your face and tell you how proud I am of you guys. But go ahead.
So I have an update from like all of our student organizations. Student Council, NHS, and the class officers are all attempting to do virtual projects during this time. Student Council hosted a virtual spirit day for autism awareness because we thought that was still a worthy cause to spread awareness of. NHS President Jordan Acosta has put up numerous opportunities to serve your community during this time, and that's on the NHS Instagram page, and people have been posting the community service they've been doing. And then the class officers have been recognizing the seniors who have chosen where they're going next year and what they're doing in the coming years and have been posting that and congratulating them throughout the Instagram and the Twitter.
And so where are you going next year?
So I'm going to be attending the University of Maine in Orno, and I'll be studying political science with a minor in Leadership Studies.
Nice. Cassie, you want to go? Are you muted? Okay, I can't hear Cassie. Can anybody else?
You're muted, Cassie.
If we scroll down the bottom of your screen, or maybe Jesse can unmute you. So if you click down towards the bottom of your screen, you should see a mute or an unmute. Or a microphone that has
I actually saw her unmute go on and go back to mute. I wonder if there's an issue with her microphone.
She was struggling with like connection earlier. I'm not sure if she's still like actually connected or not.
Okay, where's she going to school, Jacob?
She's going to Bridgewater State University, and she's, I think, majoring in early education.
And she told us that at a meeting when we actually had them face to face, I think.
Yeah.
All right. Well, Cassie, you can wave to us. I don't know what to tell you. All right. Well, if you guys, if you're willing and you want to stay on the meeting with us, we are going to talk about senior events and hopefully.
Yeah, I'll stay on.
All right. We had some warrants sent to us in the meeting of the last, or the minutes of the last meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda A.
So moved.
Okay.
Tammy.
Okay, Tammy. Is there second by Erin? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, great. Yes?
Could I recommend if the seniors are going to stay on with us, could I recommend taking that item out of order?
We sure can do that.
If they're around, I hate to have them.
Oh, come on. Jacob's having a blast staring at a screen. He hasn't done it enough today. All right, let's do that. Let's go to the superintendent, and we'll talk about senior events and kind of what Mike and Keith have been working on and what some committee members have interest. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. DeFalco.
Thanks. I appreciate that. I just want to give a quick update, and I'm sure our resident seniors here probably have more to share than I do, but I've been having ongoing conversations with Mr. Dudik and Mr. Ducharme, and I know they've had many discussions with both Ms. Sacco, Ms. Shaughnessy. And so they prepared for me to just share a couple of updates with everybody tonight, if that's okay. And then I'll, you know, turn it over. I know that the committee has some different pieces that they want to talk about too. But so far, I know the first kind of item up was prom and that the original prom date was May 1st. And advisors are working now to reserve a variety of dates, May, June, July, so that folks can still gather at some point for prom. And we've also even looked at the potential of hosting prom in our courtyard if we needed to at some point. So there's a lot of ideas going on around that. A lot of conversations around Senior Week and different activities there and looking to see if restaurants are open back up or facilities, what that might look like in terms of maybe doing something in Rhode Island or Connecticut and various ideas around senior trips and when to hold those at a later date. There was some discussion around combining our awards night with graduation, like was done at some point. I think it was prior to 1987. Maybe it was the last time it had been combined, but there was some discussion around that as well. There was some conversation around doing graduation at a later date, maybe June, July. I know there's a bunch of ideas for the committee around that too and trying to keep that outdoors. I think the headline for this is they, the advisors in the high school administration is really, really committed to keeping everything intact the best as possible, not canceling anything, which I know has been some conversation out there. And there's no desire, there's no will to cancel any of the senior events, but what could we reschedule, do later, do different? And so I just wanted to share that the senior class advisors, Ms. Sacco, Ms. Shaughnessy are hard at work with the administration, and I know the seniors themselves in reorganizing some of the planning of this. And I just want to say a big shout out to our senior class because this is probably really, really tough for you. You guys opened the year with mosquitoes and all the wonderful things that brought to you and having, you know, things that you couldn't do at certain times. My dog, sorry. And some things that you couldn't do during the fall, and now you're ending with this. So I'll stop here and I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Jacob, did you want to add anything to that?
Not really. Yeah, like the administration has been meeting with the senior class, like I think most Fridays or Thursdays weekly, just to like give us all updates and keep us on the same page. And yeah, that's basically all we discussed last week. But I did have one question. There was an email sent out like to parents about like third quarter and fourth quarter updates on like grading and stuff, but it wasn't sent to students, and I was just wondering if it was possible for that to be sent to the student body.
Oh, sure. I can let Mr. Dudik know to send that out to the students without, that's, yeah, no issues with that.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Cassie, if there is something you want to say, you can type it in, unless you can speak now, I'm not sure. Okay. Tammy, did you want to talk, or Erin, did you want to talk about senior event?
Erin, you want to go, or do you want me to go?
You can go.
So a couple of members and myself were sort of just randomly texting one morning about possible options for graduation. I think many people over the past couple of weeks, parents of seniors for sure, have been on social media and just sort of really concerned that graduation would be canceled. And we started to think about, you know, options in the current climate, what we could do. One of the sort of options that popped up on Facebook, honestly, was the thought of doing it at a drive-in where people could, families could stay in their car. I mean, there's a lot of different options that could happen at the drive-in. So based on that, I reached out to the owners of Mendon Drive-In, the Endelmans, and, you know, I just emailed them just to see what, if they would allow us to use their venue if we needed it for graduation, if it came to a point where we couldn't gather, but we were still allowed out of our houses, at least in a car. So I emailed them and literally within two minutes, Mr. David Endelman got back to me and said, absolutely, you could use our venue. So I wanted to bring this to the committee. And I'm not saying this is the only option or the best option, but I think that in order to hold our date of June 5th, we would need to kind of consider that. I did ask him about a charge, and he said it won't, they wouldn't charge a lot. He didn't have an exact amount because of course we don't know an exact plan, but that it would have to be a daytime graduation versus an evening graduation in case they were able to use their drive-in to show movies. So we talked or, you know, emailed about possibly, you know, a 1 o'clock graduation with the intent to be clear of the drive-in by 4:00. Among the committee members, you know, we talked about using the screen to show the students and, you know, their accomplishments, maybe tie in the awards night type of things on the screen. We would also be able to, you know, do the live speeches and that kind of thing or potentially be able to do that using the microphone system that they have at the drive-in when they make, you know, the popcorn announcements. I just wanted to bring that to the committee. I don't know if that's something that we need in action for necessarily right now, but I just wanted to bring it up as a possibility for where we might be in June. And that would allow us to save our date. Because my concern about doing anything too late is that some of these students are going in the service. Some of them are going to out-of-state colleges. Some may be playing sports in college, which means they have to go even earlier. So I'm, although I think it's all avenues need to be explored, I'm more concerned with like an August type thing where we may exclude
Somebody.
some amount of kids, and, you know, that is someone's kid who deserves to be recognized as much as the next. So that was just an option that I wanted to put out there.
We had also talked about making that a kind of a parade type thing. So allowing the seniors to do their parade and, you know, maybe start at the high school and parade to the movie theater through town, through the, through the community. And, you know, you've seen people doing it with their birthday parties and other kinds of things lately, so it's not uncommon. But just wanted to make sure we got that, those options out there. Again, I don't know that we're the decision makers. We're not. But we have, you know, a couple of students here, and we have the superintendent here and the assistant superintendent, and just, I guess we're looking for directions of even interest in something like that, to hold that date or just, you know, kind of let the, let the powers that be do what they're going to do. But I do think from a committee perspective, and this is our opportunity to talk about that, you know, it's important to us that recognitions happen as best they can. And whether we're talking about something for the eighth grade or something for the fifth grade or something, but particularly for this senior class, that they have their acknowledgement of job well done.
Sorry, can I just add one thing to what Jane was just saying also? I think what the drive-in also would allow us to do, and of course, things would have to be carefully crafted. Students could walk across something. I don't know if it's necessarily a stage, but the drive-in is large enough to fit. I think we said 800 cars. I think that's what we saw online. So it would allow for that, but there could be potential where we could social distance them in the great outdoors of the drive-in and be able to actually have them walk in their cap and gown and add to the moment and keep it as true to what it normally is also.
Well, I definitely can have and have already planted the seed with the high school administration to get a sense. And so I know they're having ongoing discussions with the senior class advisors. So I, you know, I get the sense that within a couple of weeks, there'll be some decisions made with the senior class advisors and with the seniors themselves, along with administration, to determine what avenue they want to take. I think this is a really interesting and innovative and creative option. That sounds pretty cool, actually, and pretty different. And so I'm super appreciative of Tammy and others coming up with this. So like I said, I've planted the seed with both Mr. Dudik and Mr. Ducharme, and they were intrigued by the idea too. And I know that they're going to be having a lot of conversations in the next couple of weeks around some next steps to finalize the plans. But thank you so much for thinking outside the box, for sure, on that. That's pretty cool.
Erin, go ahead.
So I just, I think Tammy had included you and I in the email as chair and vice chair. So Tammy, was there something we needed to do to secure that date even temporarily? I think we felt like we were probably the first ones asking them. And if this becomes a need, most communities around might be reaching out to them as well as drive-ins are super, you know, there are not a lot of them around anymore. So even if it's tentatively, was there something we needed to do to confirm that date with them?
They, his final question was sort of how many people, what are you thinking for setup and, you know, that kind of thing. So I think we would just have to sort of kind of at some point get back and say, yes, thank you. Here's what we're thinking.
Tammy, did he get, or I'm sorry, did he
I missed a word, Jason.
Did he give a date that he was looking for any feedback by or?
He didn't. I asked him, again, I thought sticking to the date of the current graduation was a better idea in that I was just worried about those people that might not be able to go later. And originally I had sort of asked for nighttime time slots. He said, you know, we'd prefer to do it during the day. And he just said, you know, if we, we can keep that date if we don't have something else. So I think it's important that we kind of book something, so he doesn't book something else type thing sooner rather than later for that. But he didn't give me a drop dead date. And, you know, my initial outreach to him was if we need it. I mean, obviously, you know, there's a lot of things that we have no control over, and we wouldn't move it just for the fun of doing something different. It was, you know, it was based on a need-based request.
And I think another important part of this discussion is to let people who may watch this meeting or may see this, that we, that this is an important topic of conversation because there has been dialogue on social media, you know, we should have a senior parade or we should have a this. And I do think that as the high school leadership and as the senior leadership kind of make some plans, letting people know that they are making them, not that anything's final, not that it'll be final tomorrow or two weeks from now. We're all getting uncomfortable with the unknown, but as comfortable as we can be in the uncomfortable. But just to let people know that it is in the discussion because I think, you know, there are a lot of folks out there who are wondering, and the more we can help them with that wonder, I think the better we serve our community.
So is there any harm? And I just found the string of emails, and it looks like March 28th, Tammy, was the last one from him and maybe no, unless you didn't reply all. I feel like we shouldn't leave it hanging anymore, any longer. Is there any harm in replying and saying tentative to, you know, or do we want to still do wait and see? I just hate if we're two weeks from now and everyone all of a sudden is like, oh, that is a good idea, and the spot works. And then he's like, but you didn't reply since March 28th. And then the date or time is, if he's going to restrict them to the afternoons, they will fill up, I think.
I don't think there's any harm in another, another email that, you know, that's the date of our graduation and we'd like to keep it in our pocket if it's, if they would allow us to. Or even just to say to them, you know, we are still working out a lot of issues. We would like to keep this as an option. If somebody else contacts you for this date and time, could you let us know first so we can either hold it or not?
Yeah, I think a deadline too would be really helpful. To everybody's point, if we have to do something different, it would be good to have a deadline put on it on the administration and the senior class advisors and to know that by, you know, April X, we need to have a date in mind, and we have to confirm that. So I think, you know, I think people just work better with deadlines.
Yep, agree.
I can certainly, I can certainly respond to what is out there now. And who, Jason, I can also give him, you know, someone else's name. Obviously, this isn't necessarily a committee decision. Just I was more, I wanted to more have this discussion because I think parents were getting nervous that there was someone contemplating canceling graduation, and that really wasn't what we were hoping for. Would that be Mike Dudik, or does Keith handle the graduation stuff?
No, Mike would be the best person to.
Mike, okay.
And I want to make sure parents hear this straight from me because I do think it's important. Tammy, I'm so glad you mentioned that because it wasn't, it wasn't even on my mind as something anybody would think. We would never cancel graduation. We just wouldn't. We might have to do it different. It might look different. I think, Tammy, to your point you were mentioning, but this is such a huge milestone in the lives of our seniors that we just, that never even crossed my mind, the senior class advisors' minds, nor the high school administration. So I don't want parents to be worried about that.
Right.
It is happening.
It is.
Across the country. I have a friend who's in California, and their graduation just got canceled.
Not in BMR. It's too important. We'll figure it out. Movie theater. We're going to get this.
A Zoom graduation meeting.
We honored, recognized, celebrated, and we couldn't be more proud of our senior class.
You walk across your house with your cap and gown on. We'll do, we will definitely do something. This is about celebrating the people and the jobs they've done, and you worked very long for that. So you deserve something. All right, Jacob, do you want to add anything else, or?
I just had a question. Like, since our, like, venue for graduation is technically our school, we don't really have to like book that in any sort of advance. So like with how like things are changing every other week, basically, does it, like, we wouldn't have to make a decision on graduation necessarily until mid-May since our venue is like our school, right?
Right.
Okay, I was just pointing that out there as like, we don't have, like, a lot of schools are struggling because like, like for BBT, they have a venue in Worcester that holds all of them. It's not their school, so they really have to like work through other people. With us, I think we're like at an advantage where we get to actually have liberty with our school.
I think the only, the other side of that, Jacob, is if you have to use another venue and there's planning to go into it, I think, you know, to the point of our conversation with the drive-in, then you have to, they have to do some setup. So you can't tell them the day before, hey, we're showing up. So there is probably some timeline where we have to think about, but you're right. We're, you know, we're just at the governor's will on what happens next.
Yeah.
The next hour.
Every day, 1 o'clock or whatever time it is. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Well, Cassie said thank you. We're sorry we couldn't hear from you, but we appreciate you logging in. You can stay if you'd like, or you can hit the little telephone thing at the bottom of your meeting screen. It's up to you. All right. So we will continue on our agenda. The superintendent, middle of the year evaluation, this formative evaluation, and I'm going to turn it over to Wendy.
Thanks. Ooh, hang on a minute. Oh, thank, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't on mute. Thanks, Jane. So the formative assessment for this year and the purpose of the formative assessment is actually to discuss, you know, the evidence that was submitted at our, one of our March meetings, is that correct? It was March, one of our March meetings. Review the evidence and share out how we, if we feel as though Dr. DeFalco is moving in the direction and progressing as, as we all hope, and it clearly shows. And then if there is any, any comments or any information that any of us want to share, it's important at this point to share it out now. If there's evidence that may be different than what you were hoping, it's important to share that out now. So moving forward, changes can be made. But unfortunately, we're in this position at this point with the purpose of a formative is to move to the summative and make changes if needed. But now we're in a position where we're not actually in school. So at this point, we're going to share out the formative and then maybe have a discussion on where we go from here. Because we are going to, as part of Dr. DeFalco's contract and as part of the end of the year, we wrap up, we talk about evidence, but we're going to be missing a, you know, a good chunk of moving forward opportunities to share out. So this is all great evidence that's happening right now and all this information that has been shifted to our district. But what I'm going to go through now is his formative on what has taken place from September all the way up to March. Does that sound good? If anybody has any comments that they'd like to make within each standard, I'll pause. And if you have any comments, please feel free to make them.
Thanks, Wendy.
Okay. So the first standard is standard one, and that is instructional leadership. And what the standard under instructional leadership is defined as is the educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus for school. And, um, just for people at home, um, we had sent out just a survey saying progressing, um, it's on a scale of five and the entire committee feels as though he's progressing nicely through this standard. Um, does anybody have any comments, um, any, um, strengths, focus for growth, anything that you'd like to share under standard one?
Um, are you? Amy, sorry.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Um, I don't know if this is where this goes, um, and I, and I questioned, um, this when I was going through the cycle. So if it's in the wrong spot, um, Wendy will let me know, but, um, one of the things for curriculum, I think Jason's done a fantastic job with curriculum and leading, um, the expectations within um, the buildings for curriculum, getting everybody on board there. The only thing I would like to see, um, perhaps different um, when we go through the next, um, area of curriculum is to present us with more options of programs, et cetera. I think, um, with the science, we were presented with one option and then when it came time to vote, a different option came to us, um, with the ELA curriculum, we basically were given one option and it was sort of, um, this is what we've piloted for, you know, a month and here's, here's your choice. But I, I would like to see more choices, I guess, um, when it comes to curriculum and have a couple of things piloted, a couple of, um, top choices piloted so that, um, it's truly a choice and we see options versus here's the one, vote on it. And again, I apologize if this isn't the section.
Uh, not quite, but that's okay. Um, but I also want to speak to, I'll speak to that point since it, since it came up because I want to be careful about like kind of where those, those choices come in. Um, I know with the ELA, we were made very well aware by the committee that presented to us that they studied a lot of different things, that they, that they studied it and chose to use their time, their energy focusing on this, this one program, um, based on its ratings, based on its success in other schools, based on looking at it at other schools. So I, I think sometimes we have to make sure that the process, um, is one that's, that's um, appropriate to the study of programs and not necessarily have us have options come to the school committee. The school committee is funding the curriculum, but the school committee is not developing the curriculum. So I, I don't know that it's the school committee that needs options. I think it's the group that's studying it and the teachers and the staff and the, the curriculum committees that need to explore options. Um, but I'm not sure that it needs to come in our direction. So I wanted to get both sides of that coin there.
And I think I agree with, I think both, both perspectives, um, to Tammy's point. Um, in a budgetary standpoint, there may be options, you know, moving in the future that may cost, we may have to look at as a cost savings or a cost. Um, and, and as a committee member, and we have to decide on, you know, cost and budgetary points. So if there is, you know, two options and we're really diving into, um, the budgetary aspect, I think the options would, would, uh, benefit itself if we had to. Um, and I think I agree with you, Jane, it shouldn't be our option to decide what to, but I do think it's in our best interest to come with options and have that collaborative approach, um, when we address it and, um, you know, and it comes to us for approval. Um, I look at it as more budgetary versus more of a, um, um, choosing which one is best, um, because I think I would leave that up to our team, um, because they are the ones who are piloting it. But I do think as a committee, you know, it is our job to be collaborative and, um, see different sides. Even if it was both and you share the positives and the things that didn't work so well, um, I, I would have to agree with Tammy on that one, that it's important to at least, you know, budgetarily have two options. Anybody else for standard one?
You could, um, I'll just say if you do want to speak, you're just gonna have, because I don't see everybody at the same time. So I know people are trying to raise their hand, but I don't see it. So I am going flipping back and forth, but I might not catch you. So you might just have to speak.
I can see everybody, Jane.
Okay.
I have, I have two different screens going. So if I see a hand or I see a mute, I can see them on mute.
Thank you.
Anybody else for standard one? Okay, standard one, um, this is instructional indicator B. Instructional indicator B, standard one talks about ensures that instructional practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality of effort and work. Engage all students and a personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests and levels of readiness. And in that particular standard, we all agree as well that he's progressing, um, progressing in that area, um, nicely. And when I say nicely, it's, it's a four or a five, um, in, in a scale of one to five. Does anybody want to comment on that? Okay, let's go to standard one, B three. Um, one B three is the same, um, actually all of them. One talks about student engagement, quality and effort and work and meeting diverse needs. And again, um, that falls all under, um, standard one and he's meeting that. Um, he's meeting that, um, with success and progressing. Um, and, and Jay, Jason, maybe you can speak to this, but the standard one F, is that new?
Can you just read the standard?
Sure. Um, student learning demonstrates expected impact on student learning based on multiple measures of student learning growth and achievement, including student progress on common assessments and statewide student growth, um, measures where available. So it just looked different on the website.
Yeah, I think that, so I, I think it was two years ago, the Department of Ed, uh, or a year ago revised the principal rubric in the superintendent rubric. So there were a few additional indicators that were added or revised. I believe that may have been one of them.
Okay, I just wanted to get clarity because it did look very different.
Yeah. I think the one looks different too at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and out of the eight of us, he is progressing in that area. Is there anybody who wants to share a comment to that?
I, I just, um, would like to say in, in this area in particular, I think this has been one of the strongest focuses that we've seen. The addition of the coaches, the addition, I mean, the impact of student learning, I am very hopeful, um, will result in some progress. I think it has resulted in tremendous progress. But we've seen a lot more student learning engagement, student learning support than we have, um, in my years on the committee. So um, not only do I think this is progressing well, I think it's excelling.
And Jane, I'd have to jump in and agree with you on that. I think this is, this, the vision for this is extremely strong. I, I think there's things in place that over the last 10 years, we've never seen. Um, we have implemented the coaches. We are implementing, um, um, you know, a standard assessment to track the student progress. Um, and I know, um, I would like to see just a little bit of what that looks like in terms of the student. Um, when we break that down, you know, I, I think the vision is great. I think it's really strong. Um, but I'm, I'm wondering what that looks like based off of the evidence that was given. For instance, if we have a cohort of students um, that are still, let's say, struggling, you know, what does that look like in terms of, um, getting down into the students? Have they broken up into groups? Have they, and it may be a plus, it may be, you know, good, bad or indifferent. Um, but in terms of evidence, I would just like to see a little bit more of how, what it looks like in terms of the student aspect or the application part of it, because I think the vision is very strong. Um, and like I said, the amount of work that has gone into the leadership team, um, and the education behind it is, is exceptional. Um, so I agree with you, Jane, on that, but I just wanted to add that little bit of, um, evidence that me as a committee member is looking for. Anyone else want to jump in on standard one? We are just about done standard one. So I'm going to move on to standard two if we're okay. Okay, standard two, standard two is, give me one second. Standard two is management and operations. So in standard two, we have promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing and scheduling. So standard one A, uh, two A one is plans and procedures and routines. Um, two A two is operational systems and two A, is it two A? Two A three is social emotional well-being and student health and safety. And in that area, um, it's very strong. Um, I think Dr. DeFalco is progressing. I think he's done an excellent job with our buildings. Uh, I'm commenting right now. Sorry, I should have waited. But, um, I think he's done a great job. He's talking about the vestibules at the high school. I think he's done a lot of work at the complex. He's talking about the, um, you know, the water in Millville and things that are happening in the buildings. I think the safety, um, has been flawless and I thank Dr. DeFalco and, um, um, Matt for doing a great job constantly keeping up on those, um, you know, the things that, you know, are behind the scenes. Um, does anybody else want to comment on that?
I'll add to that. I, I somewhere in these comments, I can't keep up with which ones were mine and not now. Um, but I had commented on the vision and the plans and the implementing of, um, and again, I'll, it piggybacks what Wendy just said. It's a vision that we've never seen eh, on this committee. So, you know, with this committee. So it's nice to see. Um, it's nice to see the follow-through and I, I just, I want to say, keep doing what you're doing in that area for sure. Uh, and I think it's even more evident. Uh, I know this was pre-March, but it's hard not to even encompass the weeks that we, we've been dealing with here. Um, if anything, it has just reinforced the way I was feeling before.
And if I can jump, just jump in on, on the comments that were shared. Um, even amid current situations, Jason has gone above and beyond to ensure children, um, get meals. I think we need to echo that. That is definitely in the standard. Um, out there, um, changing the bus routes to, to meet the needs of the people that need them. I know on social media, we've seen nothing but positive things come out of the, um, the meal plans. Um, plans, procedures and routines are Jason's strong point. He has a vision and he plans and plans and procedures are well-written to achieve goals. So I think, um, the entire committee feels the same way. Um, in, in terms of this standard and standard two. Any other? Tammy, go ahead.
I just, I also, uh, want to point out that during this current situation, um, you know, the, the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, um, with Jason as our leader through this process, um, put a plan in place um, so quickly that really worked, wo- worked. I mean, it needs to be, things need to be tweaked and that's, that's expected. But, um, when the Commissioner of Education in Massachusetts, I think had a purview that maybe it wouldn't last so long and the directives weren't as clear and concise at the beginning. Um, Jason and his team, the leadership within here in our district and our teachers put together a plan that said that, um, learning, you know, the word optional came out of that, of the, um, commissioner's, um, directive. And I think that Jason and his team, um, took that and, um, just went above and beyond any expectation, um, as a parent, as a teacher, as a school committee member. I, um, have, uh, unfortunately, I'm part of three different school districts, you know, good or bad. And I think that, um, Jason's leadership and plan going through this rough time told our parents and our kids that your, their learning was important and that we weren't going to give up just because we weren't sitting in a building and that we were going to get on it day one, not day 21, not day 42. Day one, we had something in place to support the continued education and I cannot speak enough about how thankful I am, um, of that plan.
Agreed.
Anyone else? Okay, standard three. Standard three is family and community engagement. Standard three, um, the standard is defined as promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with family, community organizations and other stakeholders that supports the mission of the school and the district. Um, in all of the standards, um, the standards that are addressed are three A one, which is family engagement. Um, three A two, which is community and stakeholder agree, um, engagement. And the last one is, um, standard, um, three D one, which is family concerns. And, um, all of the committee feels that Jason is progressing in this area. Um, um, standard three D one, um, there's a variety of, um, different responses. If anybody would like to jump in on that, um, feel free. Jane, go ahead.
So I, I guess I think this one is probably the most impacted by what's been happening lately. Um, and I know I'm somebody who filled out, uh, my responses before we shut down, um, the indoor building and not the outdoor building because we have not shut down and never shut down. But I do think that the evidence that I've seen, um, in this last month, uh, or five weeks or whatever it has been, um, only validates my feeling that people have a pipeline to the superintendent. Uh, more are starting to use it. I think these hotlines have, have been phenomenal. I think these outreaches. Uh, I'm sure that there were some, uh, families who probably said, please don't notify me again. Um, I don't need the, uh, any more connection, but I think that, um, from where I had kind of rated this before to, to rating it now, I think we are on a trajectory that hopefully most people know that there are lots of ways to get help. There are lots of ways to get resources. There are lots of ways to express your, um, opinions. We will never be people who can monitor the, um, social network of the world and say, you know, you can't put your complaints on social network because people are people and they will do what they do. But I think and I hope that all of them know, and I've seen it a lot, particularly in the last couple of weeks of people who start to say a problem and, and the initial response of the first or second person is, we'll call the superintendent. Um, and I think that's being done and I think that's, that is great. And I hope people, um, understand that that has always been there. Uh, and maybe now that, that we'll see a lot more, um, collaboration and communication between the community and the district.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay. Um, moving on to the last standard, standard four, which is professional culture. Um, promotes the success of all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations and continuous learning for staff. Um, and in this particular area, um, standard four A one, progressing nicely, that, that means it's four or five. Um, standard two, again, we're, we're progressing nicely. We all agree that he's progressing, progressing in four A two, which is mission and core value. And, um, standard four A three, again, um, we're progressing or, um, Dr. Falco is progressing nicely in this area as well. Um, so in terms of professional culture, I think we feel as though he's moving in the right direction. Um, if anybody, um, wants to comment on this particular, um, standard, feel free, anybody? Now's the time? No? Okay. Um, Jason, do you have any comments or anything you'd like to share? I have, um, there are some comments under, um, um, you know, standard one questions. I think those are just relevant to comments for you, but I think, um, does anybody have any, um, comments for his professional learning goal or his student learning goal? I know that wasn't on there. Um, we looked strictly at the evidence on the rubric, which is kind of standard one and two as well. But I just wanted to make, um, give an opportunity for the committee members if they have anything they would like to share or anything they'd like to see moving forward. Um, Jane, I don't know how you want to address this because, like I said, we're in a time where you create a formative and you, you might want to ask for things or see things differently, but we're going to reach, we may reach the end of the year. Um, and, and just, we have to dialogue at what that's going to look like.
Well, and, and we, we also, um, Well, and, and we, we also, um, will be developing, you know, this, we changed our timeline, so the summative review is not until October. Um, and so, you know, what's happening in April will look very different than maybe what's happening in September. Um, and so, you know, from my perspective, um, I think we have to trust in the system. Um, we have to trust in the direction that it's going and if it's not going the way that, that, that we would like to see, I think this is our opportunity when we, when we gather together. But I don't know, you know, we don't know what evidence we'll be able to. We don't know that there'll be an MCAS. We don't know that there'll be, um, you know, any more star testing and we just don't know. So I don't know where we go with this.
I, I want to just address, um, one quick thing because I think it needs, it's going to need an adjustment and that's the professional learning goal because it says that Jason would, would walk a day in the life of these students. But, you know, Jason, I, I'm not quite sure how many days you, you are, how many grades you've done so far. But if it's a professional learning goal, it might need an adjustment, um, with the goal maybe still in mind. But how are we going to address that moving forward when, when there's such a, a, a lack, um, small amount of time? So I, I think we really need to really think about that one because we can't just let that one go. I think it's important to have these goals. Um, but I think, you know, if Jason sees a different way of looking at it, um, maybe from a different perspective, it might be helpful, but I, I worry that if we leave it, we're not doing it justice because, you know, that we created those goals and I think there could be some type of tweaking to that goal to move forward.
So to, uh, to your question, I was able to get through kindergarten, uh, started with kindergarten and finish up with fifth grade and we were planning the middle school dates. Um, but it's interesting because today I, um, participated in a, a literacy lunch at Millville Elementary and joined a bunch of my, uh, Millville Elementary friends and scholars and their reading teacher to have lunch with them and talk about, um, Sw- uh, Swiss Family Robinson, which was the book they read. And so I'm wondering, um, how maybe I can adapt that and join some of their Google classrooms and participate in, you know, lessons and things that they're doing and work that they're doing. And, uh, I have to tell you, it was the best, you know, half hour of the past month. It was the first time I got to do that. So, um, I really loved, um, being in that, uh, class. And it was actually fun because a lot of their parents were kind of walking by and kind of peeking in and waving. And so I got a really nice opportunity to see what the remote learning looks like on that end. Because we've spent so much time on the planning stuff and all the logistics. I haven't had a chance to get into a, a Google classroom or Google hangout with kids yet. So I don't know. I wonder if maybe that's a way to adapt some of that work as we go through this next phase.
Yeah, and I think that, that, that's a, that's a great option. I think actually living, living in, in that opportunity to see the Google classrooms at its finest in a kindergarten, in a first grade, in a, in a high school setting. I think that adaptation is, is going to be what's going to be key. Um, I know that, uh, you know, w- when I, when I wrote my comment, um, I wanted to, um, really talk about the reflection part of it. And, you know, what does that look like in terms of reflecting on, you know, each grade level? So each grade level has its own unique concerns. It has its own unique, um, you know, piece to it. And I, and I think in terms of evidence, I would like to see evidence of, of a reflective piece. Um, just, you know, where you, where, you know, what makes that, that grade level so unique? If, if you notice things, you know, with, not necessarily within the classroom specific, but if you notice that maybe, you know, you have, you know, 50% or 70% are, you know, um, you know, doing this and 30% are doing this in this whole cohort. You know, what reflective things could be put in place, um, for that particular grade? So I think in terms of evidence, I was looking a little bit more towards, um, you know, the application piece of those days and what takeaways are there. And I think that still can lend itself to the, um, virtual classrooms and being in that virtual cla- classroom, seeing, you know, what are the benefits? Um, what are some struggles and, and picking up on, you know, each individual grade as a, as a whole? So I just wanted to make sure I clarified, you know, what evidence, you know, could be tweaked and actually just talking about the professional goal and where do we go with that? So thank you. Does anybody else want to comment?
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
Okay. Well, thank you. Jason, did you want to comment at all?
Just quickly, first and foremost, I want to thank the committee for the feedback. I think that, um, this is important and I take feedback, uh, very, very seriously. And because I, I think it's, it's how we're going to continue to grow. And so when, it's, it's interesting, um, when we went into this kind of, um, remote learning phase, right, your, my adrenaline was kind of through the roof and it was, let's get plans in place. Let's keep kids supported, fed, safe, learning. Um, and, you know, once we got through the first couple of weeks and we had a little bit of a system, again, needing adjustments and modifications, but the, the questions in my mind then shifted to, okay, we've got kind of this phase in place. The next phase needs to be, how do I shift, uh, my systems and structures and support and, and, uh, feedback and questions to our administrators, to our teachers, to our families, to our kids, students, to make sure that we're progressing, um, the best we can. Um, and so I think, I'm mentioning all that only because the question here is, how do, how do I adapt again, right? Like, so how do I take the feedback from the committee, which is, which is so incredibly important, and look at the goals that we have for the district? And how do I adapt those to continue the district on a forward momentum? Because I, I do feel strongly, uh, that we have to keep moving forward. And it doesn't matter if we're, you know, tens and tens of miles apart, uh, or if we're in the same building together. Um, the, the kids don't get another shot at this year. They just don't. And so we have to keep thinking about, I have to keep thinking about, um, how do I shift and adapt the goals, um, while trying to maintain a sense of kind of calm and continuity across the work? So this feedback to me is really helpful and I'm going to spend a lot of time reflecting on that to figure out, uh, you know, the kind of so what now what? How do I do this? And keep the focus on teaching and learning, you know, uh, even as recent as this week, our instructional lead, our leadership team, uh, meeting on Tuesday morning was around, okay, let's double down and talk about how do we keep our instructional focus work progressing and moving and how do we support teachers and kids with that? Um, with that focus on critical thinking and what does critical thinking look like? Remotely, yeah. How do we keep, you know, how do we keep that support in place? So, um, I just want to thank the committee, uh, for the feedback and know that I'm relentlessly focused and dedicated on trying to improve and continue to move the district forward with the goals we've laid out before us. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, going back to the agenda, um, so you have in your packets, um, a contra- a one-year contract extension, uh, for Unit C. Uh, we were in negotiations with that unit, um, and had really just, uh, begun. I had done our, our training and then kind of one-day summit, if you will. Um, but really didn't get to a point where it felt like we could do that remotely or figure out how to do that remotely. So, uh, we are proposing a one-year contract extension. You have the memo of understanding for that. Um, and does anybody have any questions about that?
Jane, can I just mention that Unit C, um, President Julie Wolford, uh, wanted to share that her members were so, uh, you know, just really grateful to the school committee through all of this, uh, separate and apart from negotiations, but just the collaboration and working together with them. And, um, they, uh, the extension passed 77 votes, uh, in favor and none against. So I just wanted to share that.
And, you know, and, and then we would enter negotiations next fall or whenever the opportunity to get groups together again. But, um, if nobody has any other comments, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve that MOA. Anybody?
Motion, motion to approve.
Okay. Now I wasn't looking. Now who was that?
Sarah.
Sarah, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jack. Um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstentions?
I'm going to abstain.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you. Um, and that is something that we will need to sign, uh, when we sign warrants. Are we going to do the Monday thing again?
Uh, yes, we can do the drive-through.
Are, are you here on Mondays or is a different day better?
No, I'm, it's usually three, two, three days a week still. I'm, I'm working in the office of the days I'm working here. So if Monday works for folks, that's great. I can shoot in Monday. If, uh, I know some of our committee members also have our family, you know, our parents and, uh, Monday will be an individual workday for kids. So I don't know if that will work best for folks. If they want to shift it to a Tuesday, I'm totally open. So I guess, you know, when you want to do it.
I just need to be after my workday, which is, uh, until two o'clock now.
So after two?
I'm flexible.
Me too. But afternoon, it has to be afternoon for me. So.
Afternoon.
I can send out a, in a, our weekly update tomorrow. If that, is that working just a date, you know, and?
Yeah, that works.
The warrants are ready.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, I think that's it for us for now anyway. Um, so I'll turn it over to Dr. DeFalco.
Awesome. Thanks so much. Um, I just have a couple of items on my report for this evening. Uh, the first is, uh, I'm, if the committee members, I had asked for permission to, uh, enter into a memorandum of agreement with our Unit A, um, staff regarding their remote learning plan that we would need to put into place. And I have to tell you, the work with our Unit A, um, Executive Board, in particular, our Unit A President, Vice President has just been awesome. Um, you know, when, when we went into this, um, if you remember, we called it kind of an emergency professional development day, if you will, uh, when we knew we were going to probably be off for a couple of weeks. This was before the governor called. Um, and, you know, we, we had a meeting that Friday and we had, uh, Unit A, B and C, uh, Presidents with the, um, members of our, um, central office leadership team and some of our leadership team members all around the same table. Um, and, um, they have just been incredible partners in developing the plan for our remote learning. So I just really want to thank them publicly. Um, we would not be able to move forward in the direction we are without their partnership. Um, so appreciative of our teachers, counselors, uh, and, and their leadership, uh, with that, including Unit C, uh, and B has just been awesome. Um, so we put together a, it's in your packet, um, a memorandum of agreement. Um, and I certainly won't read through all of it, but the, but the first piece is around, um, some of the nuts and bolts. Uh, it's really the first two pages, um, to develop some common understanding and language around how we would work, um, in these next said number of weeks, whatever that ends up looking like. Um, and behind that, we created, uh, it's a two-page, uh, subsequent plan. It's attachment one that we're referring to as our learning plan, um, and revised calendar. And you will see that the teacher's work is really, uh, in kind of five different buckets, if you will. Live learning, meeting time, professional development, preparation time and family communications. Um, and again, I just have to say that, you know, we wrote this with our, um, Unit A Executive Board. They were incredible. They were just upbeat, collaborative, forward-thinking, um, and, uh, along with, alongside of our leadership team. So, um, what you have in front of you this evening, uh, actually, um, Unit A, uh, was able to ratify. They took a vote on it. Um, and as of this afternoon, at three o'clock, uh, 84 members voted in favor and there was one, uh, that voted against. So of 85 folks that voted, 84 members are in support. And I just want to say, this is what happens when you get all of the leadership of, of everybody around the same table. Of course, six feet apart now, like this. Um, but, um, it was just, it was a win-win. And it was great to hear from our AT, our, um, MTA, uh, regional rep and, uh, your attorney, our attorney, Mike Long, it basically said, how did you guys do this? Um, this is very clear. It's concise. Um, our attorney, uh, was really, uh, really positive about the language in this document. So I just wanted to put all that up front because we will need a vote of the committee, uh, in support, I hope, of the MOA that's in front, uh, of you this evening. And I do want to also mention that, um, there is this strange notion somewhere, and I don't know where it started or how it started, that teachers aren't teaching full-time anymore or that people aren't working full-time anymore. I don't know where that comes from. Um, I will tell you, our staff in BMR is working as different and as hard as they ever have. Um, and even in the plan that's in front of you accounts for at least 30 hours of work a week. And we know that our teachers and educators are doing more than that. Um, so I, again, I just want to give them a shout out and I want to bust the myth that our teachers aren't working. Um, and those teachers that are on the committee, uh, you know that better than anybody, that you're all working harder and different than you've ever worked before. And when you blend that homework with the kind of the, you know, the, uh, in the office place or in the classroom work, there's no delineation now. We're on. We're just on all the time. So, um, in front of you, uh, is the MOA that, um, seeking, uh, support from the committee around.
Okay.
I just have one question, Jane.
Sure.
I, I definitely have to echo Dr. DeFalco's, um, you know, uh, sentiments on teachers working. I mean, I have three different Google classrooms going on, on a regular day and it's intense. And the work that they're putting out i- i- is just amazing. I mean, asking teachers to shift their thinking in 24 hours and completely get different materials and support kids' learning, um, i- i- is just, i- it's, it's, it's very hard in itself. Um, and also, you know, coming from a family of four and trying to keep consistency is also very hard. Um, I, I think as a general statement, I think depending on, you know, where you are with your children, I think it's, it's going to, y- your perception of what's happening is going to be very different. If you have, you know, a high schooler, it's going to look very different than, you know, a, a, a middle schooler or an elementary. But I can definitely tell you that the entire staff in Blackstone, um, and, and across the country. I mean, we, we're asking teachers to shift in 24 hours and make an adjustment. Um, and I just want to say thank you, um, for, you know, pushing the learning forward for my students, um, and for my kids. And, you know, as a teacher, it's not easy. So, um, the learning is definitely happening and the teachers are definitely planning. And I think it's really important to, to note that they're working very hard. Um, the only thing on the MOA that I had a question on is what happened?
Let's get it on the table first and then we can have, you can ask your question. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve the MOA for the learning plan?
So moved. Tammy.
Okay, Tammy, is there a second?
Second, Erin.
Okay, so moved by Tammy, second by Erin. And now discussion, Wendy, you can certainly ask your question.
I just have one question. I didn't see a protocol in place or one of the numbers for if an employee has to be self-quarantined or is diagnosed with the COVID-19 um, and cannot fulfill the remote learning responsibilities. I didn't see that on there and I was just worried because, you know, this is moving fast. Um, do we have something in place for them on, on this MOA in case they can't fulfill their duties? There's, there's something that protects them and there's something that protects us. I didn't see it. I might, I might, it might be in there.
No, I'm really glad you asked that because what, what we actually, the legislator just passed, and I'm going to get the name of it wrong, so I apologize upfront, but it's a COVID-19 Family Leave Act kind of thing where essentially, um, and I may not have it incorrectly, but, um, we would be paying our employees, uh, I believe it's two-thirds of their salary to be able to stay home and care for themselves or their, um, uh, family members at no charge to their sick time. And I think you make up the difference by using the other third, that is their sick time, to keep their pay whole. Um, so, um, yes, so that isn't, that particular, um, legislation isn't mentioned in here, but we were briefed, uh, by Mike Long's, uh, Long and DePietro, uh, his office and as a matter of fact, the whole Superintendent Association, and I know the MTA was as well. So we would default to, um, the recent legislation on that. Okay, I'm glad you asked that, Wendy.
Anybody else have any questions about this or comments or discussion?
I have, I have a question.
Sure, Erin.
Um, I think it was very well thought out and obviously very quickly. Um, my concern, and I hate to say it out loud, but if this doesn't wrap up by May fourth, this carries us through the last day of school. With what we're, with the dates that are in here, um, and scheduling the, the staff planning days, is there any? is there any thought around May 1st through the rest of the year if that is needed? Just because, and I know we're getting to this next, but consistency for kids and parents and the teachers and, you know, kind of, I, I think these days are trying to take away some of that weight on the families at home, too. What would May 1st and later look like if we're still in this situation? There, there are no dates past May 1st, that's what I'm asking.
That's a great question, Erin. Thank you for asking that because we've, we've actually, we had a conversation as recent as yesterday. Esther Cody and I, the President of Unit A, in that, you know, if there is another announcement within the week, you know, next week or the week after, which is our sense, something if we're going to hear, we're going to hear it soon, that we would huddle back up and look at, how can we build in a more regu-, on a more regular basis, the individual learning days, individual workdays, so that students will have time to get caught up on assignments, teachers will have time to get feedback to kids, get caught up on communication, planning. I think that's going to be important as we move forward. And I will say, it was really interesting. We sent out a survey to families about this. We had, and, you know, we'll segue to the April vacation thing in a minute, but we had 658 people take our survey. And the feedback on having kids, students be able to have some of these independent kind of catch-up days was, it was, it was somewhat mixed from our families, but I do think that by and large, the, the students will need it as this continues to move forward. And I think the parents will too. And, you know, we, I had a different, we're going to have to have a different level of conversation as an instructional team, as a leadership team, about how we provide support, social-emotional, behavioral to our kids as this moves forward. Because I do think we're going to see the need increase in those areas. So one of the things that our Unit A team and I have talked about is making sure that we are having regular check-ins every couple of weeks. And if there is an announcement within the next week or two regarding an extension, we'll need to huddle up again and talk about what could the calendar look like in terms of just building in some of those additional individual workdays? Because, you know, we're hearing from, not from everybody, but from a lot of our families, that the five straight days of posting assignments, et cetera, is really tough on kids.
Anyone else? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to accept the memo of understanding for the, I don't know, what is it called? Learning Plan? Learning? Remote learning? Yeah, I guess it doesn't have a title, but. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, abstentions. All right. The next item is to entertain a motion to shift the calendar, uh, calendar to not have the full five April vacation days, but to shift those days so that there is learning through April vacation and this academic year would end earlier in June, but also create the self-learning, I don't know what they were called, because now I've gone back to my agenda, but the self-learning, individualized learning days with a little bit of break throughout the rest of the year, at least while we're learning remotely. So would somebody like to propose a motion to change, adjust the school calendar?
So moved.
Okay, so is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Erin. And I'm going to start the discussion with Dr. DeFalco, who can talk a little bit more about the survey that was done in the community.
Thank you. And if I have to pause momentarily, it's, my, my dog's having an issue. She doesn't ever leave my side, so I can't really figure out what's going on. So if I pause for a second, know that that's all that is. So I sent out a survey, as all of you know, earlier in the week. 658 participants have taken the survey at this point, 534 parents and 130, 123 staff members have taken the survey. 91.6% as of 5 o'clock tonight, or 603 individuals said, yes, please eliminate April vacation. Let's get those individual kind of catch-up days in the calendar and let's back up the end of the school year to Wednesday, June 17. 603. That's, that's a lot of, of, of individuals, 91.6%. 5.9% or 39 people said no, please leave April vacation in. And 2.5%, I think this is really interesting. It was just 16 people, but they said, we trust whatever you all decide. We're okay with it, we're okay without it, we're progressing along nice. If you want to do it, great. If you don't, that's fine too. And they really did. They wrote individual comments, which they didn't have to. So I really appreciated that. So it's, it speaks volumes. I will tell you that this feedback surprised me. I didn't think folks were going to feel so strongly in favor of, of moving forward with the plan we laid out in the survey. But yeah, just under 92% of the 658 participants, and thank you everybody that took the survey, by the way, which was largely parents, 534 parents, individual parents said, eliminate April break, let's just keep moving. And I do want to share that, you know, the notion of this came from, while, while it feels like a change to families, and I, and I understand that, it came from the notion of, we don't want to, we don't want a hard stop on the momentum network that we have. The worry was, we've done remote learning up to, if it'd be April vacation, that point, five weeks, and then we put a hard stop on it. We do nothing for a week, which I thought would be a challenge for parents because a lot of parents are still working now. Like their plans all shifted, they're working from home. And then they would have their children home with nothing to do, that kind of thing. And so I think we called this one right, which I'm really pleased about. And this will allow us to continue the momentum to the degree that we've got it now through that. I also want to thank the parents. We, 206 parents wrote individual comments on how things are going. What I'm trying to do now is figure out how I can get the school committee to feedback on that, so you can see. I gotta, I have to redact names because a lot of parents were really great, like, oh, I'm so-and-so, my child is so-and-so in this grade, in this school, and here are my thoughts. So I just think that it speaks to, you know, a third of our families felt comfortable enough to actually give feedback. Matt put together, it's actually pretty neat, a word splash. I don't know if you've heard of that, but it's a word splash of the commonly used words. And Matt, if you want to unmute, I think the, I think the big word in the middle was thank you.
Actually, I think it came out as two separate words. And it was thank you, and then I believe the other word right next to it was teachers. And there were so many comments about how the teachers have been so supportive and so great, it was really overwhelming. I'll have to forward a copy of the word splash to everyone.
And we'll continue to try to find, I was, we were able to pull out, as of yesterday afternoon, 180 comments. It's just, it's just carefully redacting the names, that's all, and trying to figure out how to do that. And, but as you can imagine, it's pages and pages. But I think you'd be interested to read the feedback. There's definitely, you know, there's definitely feedback of families saying, this is great, stay the course. To some families saying, why are we taking, you know, any individual learning days, my kid doesn't need it. To families saying, we need more individual learning days. To families saying, oh my God, if you change one more thing, I'm going to go off the edge. Please stop changing it. So i- it's the whole continuum and everything in between.
And I have to, and I have to echo, you know, coming from a family of four, I don't think there's going to be a, a, a just right answer. I feel like, you know, my middle schooler is on a roll, moving forward, and I know my elementary, those teachers are working so hard to teach, but my, my boys are boys, you know, so the family struggle is there. So I think, you know, I appreciate the fact that it's going to be consistent and I'm not going to have to give them a week off, only because it's going to be that much harder to get them back in the momentum again. And I think just the consistency is extremely helpful in a household like mine. You know, but I, I definitely think you're going to see such a wide range of comments because it's what they're living in, in the current moment. I read things from, you know, somebody's, you know, high schooler going to, you know, work and is actually working and having that adjustment to be able to work from later, to, to just another elementary, you know, parent, just sharing, you know, just wanting a consistent, you know, to do the same thing every single day. So I think it's such a wide range. I don't think you're going to find an, an exact answer to this, which is going to be hard. You know, so I appreciate the consistency and not pulling, you know, a full week off because I know as a parent, it would be that much harder to make them go and start all over again. So I'm with the 91.6%.
Anyone else, Tammy?
I'm also in that 96-point-whatever percent, although my senior is not happy. Seniors are just bitter about everything about this. Not only do they, now they don't get out earlier, they, you know, they don't get their break, they, whatever. So don't tell her how I voted.
You just said, okay, thanks.
I do think the consistency is important. And I think that on the safety side of things, honestly, when you say vacation, like today is a vacation day for me in Cumberland, in Rhode Island, because the governor said today is a vacation day. It's not really vacation anyway. So let's not call it that. Let's not encourage, let's encourage people to stay home, do their thing. But when you call it a vacation day, then kids, kids are going to prompt their families more to do something vacation-like as much as they can in this. And I think that is, it just makes it harder to contain us. So I think the consistency in learning is so important. And for the value that you would get out of a vacation day at this point, it's worth keep going. So I'm glad that was the vote.
Okay, anyone else?
I just want to add, so I'm also in the 91%, but I think the 5.9% and 39 people that make up that, I think they need to be acknowledged because I'm sure the, the no was for a specific reason, for their family. And I just want to make sure they know that we, we recognize that. And I know, Jason, you, you've already said it, you've said it in every communication, that, that we're going to be flexible with their needs as well. If they need the time, they should take the time and just make other arrangements with the teacher. And, and they're not, they're not not being heard, even though there were only 39 comments or 39 people that said no. I just want to stress the flexibility that's already out there. And on those days of, of what would have been April break, if they can't do it for, you know, fit it in, and they, for whatever reason, they have to do what's best for their family. And we understand that as well. And I know Dr. DeFalco does.
Absolutely. And, and I think that's important. I'm really glad you mentioned that, Erin, because I, I've heard from some parents that have shared some really emotional stories. We have a lot of, we have a lot of essential workers in our two communities that, that are going in. And we have a lot of staff that are working overnights in hospitals, you know, Milford Hospital up in Worcester, that have said, you know, a variety of things to me. And my response to them has been, please take, first of all, thank you for your service, because they, these are frontline people right now. And second of all, take whatever time you need. And, and we understand completely. Outreach to the teacher, the principal, to me, we'll ensure that you have what you need to take the time you need. We totally understand.
I'm sorry, I'd like to jump in. Would it be okay if I try to join the 21st Century and share my screen through this medium and?
Yeah, Jesse just has to allow you to share a screen. And then he can do that.
I don't know if Jesse wants to give me an okay.
Nothing on the chat.
I can try to push the button.
Try and see what happens. They'll ask you which screen you want to share. Should ask you. Nope.
Is that allowing me to share?
No.
No, it's not then. Oh, I apologize. I don't want to take any more time.
It's okay.
Oh wait, Jesse says he doesn't see anything here. Hold on.
Yeah, I can do mine. It should be a green button down at the bottom of you. Oh, there you go. You have, oh, there's our, there you go. Okay, so there's a thank and a thank you.
There's a lot of different combinations of words based on how people.
Said it.
Did it, yeah.
True, that's about, that's 200 comments that Matt.
It's kind of cool. That should go on your Facebook page or Instagram page.
I mean, even the nurses, I mean, even our nurses are holding office hours for families that have medical questions and concerns.
That's amazing.
That's just awesome.
Amazing, over there in the corner. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks for sharing that, Matt.
My pleasure.
Yeah, I just, you know, we do have something on the table here and we'll go back to the change of calendar. But I do know in my communications with families that have reached out to me, and I think I've copied you guys on some of them, and I've spoken with Jason on some of them, we, we, we have to be, in times of uncertainty, you have to be flexible. And I think we have been, and I think we will continue to be. But I also think that we are a school district and a school district supports learning. And this will help us continue that support and hopefully support parents in their efforts to help their children learn as well. We know that everybody's doing the absolute best that they can, and that's all we can ask of ourselves and, and anyone else. So with that, does anybody have any other questions or concerns about adjusting the calendar? So I will entertain the vote to change the school calendar, eliminate April vacation, and include some individualized learning days to end the academic year on June 17. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Dr. DeFalco, it's back to you.
Great, thank you. And then just my last item for my report is just to give a quick update on where we are in terms of our COVID-19 response. We, for as long as we are in this, are absolutely committed to offering as much support as we can academically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally, from a food standpoint, to our students, families, staff, to our community. We are going to continue to, you know, update our learning plans and, and put out new work and work on giving feedback to students, working through all the additional provisions that are coming down from the Department of Education on a routine basis. And, and continue, you know, feeding our families. We are, right now, we're putting out 4,000 meals a week. And we are in the process of starting our weekend service. So that we'll be able to provide food to, for families that, which will include Saturday and Sunday. And we're working right now on putting the structure in place for that. And to expand, you know, right now, we're, we're serving about 400-plus kids a week. And we are looking now at breakfast and lunch for Saturdays and Sundays and what that will look like. And so we've been hard at work on that. We've also, with that, have also been hard at work on, on writing grants, believe it or not. We actually just awarded a $10,000 grant today. It sounds silly, but for the paper products. And the products to actually put the food and, you know, all the other things, they call them, I've learned more about food service.
Jason, can I jump in for one second?
Please do.
Yeah, to your point about the grant, Maureen, our Food Service Director, and I were on a phone call this morning with the EOS Foundation, who awarded us this grant. And they actually, they would like to do a case study on the district as part of their work because it seems that percentage-wise, Blackstone-Mildville has the largest percentage of students being fed in this entire region. They were looking at numbers from Boston, and I'm not even sure that those percentage-wise numbers compared. I mean, we're doing a really tremendous job and there's been a lot of effort. I can't thank the cafeteria workers, the food.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah. They're my heroes. Those women in the cafeteria are amazing.
Tellstones, Tellstones also has been really instrumental in getting those meals delivered. We have 40-plus sites that we're delivering those meals to. And on the phone this morning, they were just amazed. They want us to speak to other districts and try to share what we're doing so that other districts can get on board.
And I have to say, Matt, if I could just add to that, our Unit A President, uh, she, Esther organizes all the volunteers every week. She does it on her own. She sends out a spreadsheet. She assigns teachers to root, or educators and volunteers, uh, Unit A and C to the different bus routes that we're running. Jan and Keith, our assistant principals, take the red van out. I don't have to go anymore, which is great. I mean, it's down to a science. Jan and Keith are, uh, in the red van shuttling back and forth. We actually do home delivery, uh, to a few families that are so immune, immune, uh, system compromised, they actually can't leave their houses. So we deliver, uh, to the Boys and Girls Club. We deliver to, uh, four or five individual homes twice a week. Um, our bus drivers, our food staff, they are, I'm telling you, that, that is something to see. They're in their masks, they're in their gloves and they've got a whole system in place for packaging in individual, uh, brown paper bags, the lunches, uh, by family. So, and now we're looking to do that for our weekend service. Our kids can eat over the weekend.
That's phenomenal. Unbelievable.
So, so they're doing really great work. So while all of this is running, um, we are in, uh, just putting our big toe in the water, uh, what we're calling research, I'm sorry, we're calling, uh, return and recovery. And so right now we are, uh, up to our eyeballs in research. Matt, Jill and I, the leadership team, um, around. So where do we go from here? Whether we're in this phase for three more weeks, six more weeks, three more months, whatever. What does it look like to, to reopen the doors of our schools? And so, I, I share that not to worry anybody, but to do the opposite, to take the worry off your plates, if you're wondering about that. Uh, we are already on top of that, thinking about that. We are studying what's happening in other countries. We are studying our own research nationally. Uh, I sent you both, um, as if everybody both are, we, uh, articles that have come out recently. One of research from, uh, AEI and the other from Forbes, an article that was, what will it take to open our school doors? Again, um, and so we just want you to know and the community to know, uh, that we are thinking forward and looking at a variety of different plans for whenever it is we can do, whatever it is we're gonna do. Um, and trying the best we can to stay ahead of this, um, so that when the time comes for us to open our doors again, uh, we have a plan and, um, we have, you know, we're doing a lot of early thinking. We're calling it our return and recovery phase of, uh, of this work, uh, and know that, we're looking at the research that's already there. Uh, you, you've all seen it. Uh, it's, it's quite interesting to, to see what's already been, uh, published around how to get the doors of our schools opened again. So I just wanted to give an update to folks on that. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, uh, in the phaser and now, we're continuing our work around our instructional focus areas. Uh, our teachers, it's kind of interesting. They're, they're working with our principals and coaches around, uh, how do I build a small group using this iXL data and Google Classroom? I mean, that was kind of the question that they were teasing out earlier, uh, this week, which I just thought was really powerful. Um, we're still prepping, our work for literacy in our rollout of our new literacy program, in our career development work. Uh, we, um, as you know, we wrote a hundred thousand dollar grant for our middle school for career exploration. Uh, we have our second phase of that. We're doing a Zoom thing. With the grant, uh, with the granters, that's what they're called, granters, grantees or whatever they're called. Uh, ASA, uh, next week with our school-based team. So we'll all be on, uh, hoping to get that hundred thousand. For the middle school. Uh, our work at Project Leadway for the high school with our biomed pathway is moving full steam ahead. They're gonna do a virtual, uh, um, two-week, um, uh, summer program for us and biomedicine. Um, and I just don't, you know, I want folks to know the work is moving forward. Um, so whether it's a literacy webinar for our new literacy program at any given level, the Empowering Writers are doing webinars with our K and one teachers around how to keep their writing going for our little guys. Um, or it's the career development work. The work hasn't stopped. Uh, we're still moving forward. Um, and then my last piece, I just want to remind families, uh, please don't hesitate to reach out through, uh, our BMR support, at bmrsd.net email. Call me, you've got my cell phone number, parents. Text me, don't be afraid to use that. And remember that when you call the, um, the main lines to the schools, they go right to our principal's cell phones. So, uh, as we continue to move through the upcoming weeks and months, we are, we're still here.
Jason, can I just add something to that?
Please.
Back to the food, food service piece. And we are going to try to have a mass campaign. I want all of the public to know that we are able to feed anyone aged zero through twenty one. So if you have college kids at home that are eating you out of house and home, come on down and get meals. It is not bad for the district. It's great for everyone. We want to give as many meals as we can out to as many people as we can and make sure that we're feeding everyone. Students don't even have to live in these towns. So you don't have to be a student. You don't have to live in Blackstone or Millville. You just need to be between the ages of zero and twenty one. And I'm not really sure how closely we're checking IDs. But anyone can be fed and we encourage anyone and everyone to come and get meals from us.
Matt, do they need to sign up or? Okay, how does it work? Just so people know.
So it is helpful if they notify us, uh, where they are going to come to a stop and how many, people they're looking to feed, just for us to have a better sense of the numbers on that given day. But anyone can show up and we will make sure that everyone is getting a meal as best as we can. No one has been turned away yet and there are always people that show up unexpectedly and that's fine. We encourage it. And if they show up unexpectedly one day, we'll plan for them to be there the, the next day.
We've heard too from parents that have said that they, they missed the stop. Um, so we're gonna actually open the middle school up. So, uh, parents will be able to shoot over to the middle school between eleven and twelve, uh, and just do a pickup there. So we'll have the tables set up outside and, just to try to accommodate those that can't, you either use that time or they miss the stop. Sorry, Tammy.
Should, um, no, that's great. Um, should they be, in order to kind of give you a heads up, should they be filling in this, the original survey? Are you still looking at additions to that or?
You can just email me and I'm just, is forwarding the information over to Maureen and Matt so we update our numbers.
My kids keep looking at the pictures of the salads and asking why we haven't signed up yet.
I was so just gonna jump in going, that food looks so much better than what I'm preparing for lunchtime.
Eli had me sign up. Eli, Eli looked at all the pictures and he said, sign, sign me up, mom. I'll go myself. I'll walk to the stop.
You know, kids still miss their middle school lunch.
Try to take, if, whatever stress we can take off our families, we're trying. And we know this isn't a huge thing. But if it's, if you don't have to worry about breakfast and lunch, that's great. So we're trying to take as much stress off of our families as we can.
Yeah, our first pickup was Wednesday. It was awesome.
Erin?
Um, so I've had a few people ask me or I've said, you know, you should do it. And they said, they're free to sign up and either miss the stop or if the, child didn't want it that day, they don't want the food to be wasted. So is that, what is, is there a plan in place? If there are extra meals at the end of the day that we can use their money?
Food will not go to waste. Encourage anyone to sign up and come as best as they can. If someone misses a stop, as Dr. DeFalco mentioned already, we are setting up another station at the middle school. I believe that's from eleven AM to twelve PM. So if you've missed your stop, you can go to the middle school and pick up food. And even if you do miss it for the day, the food is, um, put in refrigeration. We still have all of our equipment working, so it's not going to go to waste.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Um, Matt, oh, nope. Anything else?
Oh no, Sam, that's it for my report.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's up to you.
Great. So I'll quickly go through our typical business office reports. Um, I am very happy to say that, uh, looking at our total revenue review, which is the first of the reports. All of the revenues are coming in as expected. We're not anticipating any changes to the FY, twenty revenue stream. There may be changes to the FY twenty one revenue stream based upon the current situation. But we are trying to stay on top of that as best as we can and make sure that we're preparing for that and have contingencies in place. Um, but again, if you look at the numbers, we're still expecting to bring in everything that we were expecting when we first budgeted.
Matt, can I just ask you a question about that?
Yep.
Um, so athletic fees, user fees?
Some of those, some of those, some of those we may fall a little bit short on. However, I think it'll end up being offset by the costs, particularly for the user fees. Um, if we are going to end up, in, uh, you know, looking at, at really tight spots, we might be looking at the food services budget. However, as Dr. DeFalco said, we have been aggressively pursuing grants. The more meals we actually serve, the better our reimbursements are. So that's another reason to try to get everyone to come out and take the meals, because the federal government is gonna pay for them. Um, the other piece, uh, to be aware of is we may fall short in a couple of areas, but the hope is that we're saving some money in areas as well. Uh, I, as the school committee will hear, we're trying to, work with our, uh, transportation contractor to rearrange our, plans for this year and for next year based on the current situation. And that will come directly to the school committee, but that's a little bit of a heads up. And there will definitely be some savings along those lines. And if anyone has been to the buildings, you'll notice that they're pretty frigid. We're hoping to save some money on the heating of the buildings and utilities and everywhere that we can. So the plan is that we are going to be in good shape for this year. If that changes, uh, as we get a better grasp on all of the impact and, what we're saving and what we might be losing, you know, that might be more towards the end of May. We can get a better assessment. If that changes, I'll certainly update everyone on it. So if you take a look at the total, I'm sorry, did Tammy have a question?
I, I just, um, my, my guess would be athletics. Our user fees don't cover, all of the fees that we pay out for, for, um, referees or umpire, whatever, whatever sports are going on. So I mean, would that almost, have we looked at that as a wash? Are we paying coaches if we don't have sports? Okay, I wasn't sure about that.
Any stipends for, for, um, activities that aren't going on.
Okay. And I mean, and the trans, in, in transportation, that's a whole separate thing. So the, sports, the buses for specifically for sports.
I'm sorry, that's part of the negotiations that we're actually developing a memorandum of agreement to be an amendment to our, transportation contract. Um, myself, Jay Byer and Courtney Keegan from Mendon Upton and Douglas. I actually took the lead in working with, with, uh, Neil from Tellstones, but the three communities use Tellstones. And we're working on one joint proposal. And then once we run that by Neil, that will come to the school committee. And we are not going to be paying for any of the field trip buses that we normally would have had or the athletics buses, or anything other than what we end up, um, using. I shouldn't say what we end up using, but our typical contract. And there will be an adjustment to our contract, so that there are some savings on our end.
Matt, um, is it gonna be a similar situation with out-of-district transportation or is that?
So I actually had a conversation briefly with Jill today and that will probably be, even more significant of a savings. Because we're not as reliant upon them, I think that, you know, they're larger, they're like a larger industry than Tellstones. Um, we have not been paying any of the out-of-district costs that we're not transporting students. So that the committee and the community understands, a big push for the entire state has been, how do we keep the, the bus contractors in service? There's already a national shortage of bus drivers and the fear is if we, you know, not to mention the fact that we want to keep everyone in the community employed and earning the wages that they typically would have without having them go on unemployment. So we're doing our best to do that. But the fear is if we just, put all of the bus drivers out and cancel bus contracts, if and when school starts back up, there'll be nobody to transport the students.
Okay, yep.
Um, so any other questions on the revenue? I apologize. If you take a look at the total expenditure review, there has been an adjustment made to this report. Uh, people have been wondering when it would take place and it has. So if you look at the salary lines, both in, the classroom teacher's regular education and the classroom teacher's special education. We have made adjustments now for the increases in salary that were agreed to in the, in the contract. So those are much more accurate numbers. Um, as you can see, there is, it does look like there's, a shortfall in the regular education area. That's mostly due to the fact that we hadn't anticipated as large of a percentage increase as they were given, but that's, great. Um, it is made up for in other areas and, Dr. DeFalco and I were reviewing this the other day and the long and the short is that our bottom line, is still in a good place. So if you take a look at our expenditures, I mentioned to Dr. DeFalco also that, if you look at the grant expenditures and the tuition to other states, um, at the bottom. Those are two numbers that I've highlighted in the past that are in red. But I mentioned that, the actual grant awards that we are receiving are greater. And we will be covering those tuition to other states from our circuit breaker funds. So technically, even though they're calculated into that bottom number, that's about sixty three thousand dollars, sixty four thousand dollars more. That is not really in the negative. So again, not to say that that bottom number is a hundred percent accurate at this point, given all of the things that we're going through and cer- certain circumstances, but we are in a good place financially as a district. We don't anticipate having any shortfalls. As always, we have the personnel changes report that the committee is welcome to look at. There are some, retirements that have been added to that report, but we don't discuss the specifics of it in public. Moving to the facilities report. Um, this is an area where the COVID nineteen crisis has definitely impacted us more this year, than from the financial perspective. Um, right now, with regards to the, the work that we're looking to have done on the roof, still, I know that for many of you, this has been years in process. Um, however, we do have a scope of work developed, that has been put out to certain, uh, to, to certain, um, companies to see if they're willing to do the work. And we're gonna share that scope of work with Blackstone, so that they can put it out for bids to satisfy their requirements. Technically, with the cost, it's, our requirements are really only proposing it to, putting out the written specs to three different companies that regularly would do that work. But in conversations with the Blackstone Town Administrator, they'd like to put it out to bid. So we'll share those specs and we'll see. Hopefully it won't delay things too much longer and eventually, as the weather gets warmer and hopefully we're able to start doing some work, we'll have that work done before the end of this summer. So that, that is definitely a goal of ours. With respect to the high school vestibule, um, there is a company that we were working with. We had already, basically awarded the, the work to a specific construction company. But from a materials perspective, they are not able to get the materials anymore. The, the, door manufacturer and they manufacture the mechanisms, they had a three-week shutdown, due to the COVID nineteen situation. And the earliest that we're looking at being able to get materials delivered is May eighteenth. So we're now anticipating that the high school vestibule will be a summer project as well. The capital, I'm sorry.
So can I ask a question about that, Matt? If we don't, if for some reason, this door and, and window or whatever it is, the manufacturers don't reopen, and we don't do it in this fiscal year, do we have an issue with that or it can carry over to next year? next year?
I believe that we won't have an issue with it, because we're using the funds from E and D.
E, right.
And so long as those have been allocated for that cost, we'll just write them out of our E and D fund. And whether the payment comes this fiscal year or next, you, the committee has approved the use of those funds, so we should be in, in good shape.
Okay, thank you.
I'm hoping we will pay them prior to July 1st.
Me too.
I'd like to see this get done as quickly as possible. Our capital planning process, that is something that has not slowed down, luckily. The company is still hard at work. They recently got a lot of design information from the head custodians and the administrative assistants at the buildings of, they got information on the systems that have been in the buildings and how old they are and what their functionality is. And they've now been working with Tina LaCroix and myself to analyze our expenditures from our different utilities to determine the efficiencies of the mechanisms that we have in the, in the buildings. So they're still working on that. One of the things that will come up that may be a bit of a delay is, a large portion of the project is getting feedback from the community and making sure that we're incorporating that feedback into the plans. And we have not had an opportunity to meet with them yet to discuss what that's going to look like. So that may delay things slightly, but I certainly think that we're still going to be on, on target for having everything ready for moving into the next fiscal year. So next year, we can present to the towns what our immediate priorities are, so that they can get into the capital planning process. Last but not least, the Millville Elementary Boiler Project is going on. Our bidding actually closed on the project today, and our OPM, I was on the phone with them earlier, they're going through the bids now, and we're going to discuss that at a point, probably next, early next week. There were some changes that were made to the drawings that were submitted, a very slight change. We originally were looking to bury six, six gout, six tanks of propane, smaller tanks. And now it was determined that it would be more effective to use one larger tank. And they're looking to position it a little bit in a different place, where we were looking to position it originally in the existing area. We're going to move that out a bit and position it in front of those side doors on the elementary school. And actually, I discussed this with Ms. Schaefer, the principal, and she was excited if this works out as planned, because the hope is to bury it there and then put a curb side around and have some grassed-in area that the students will actually be able to play on. It's, it's an open field area, and there'll be some walkways put in. So Jason initially was very frightened and said, will our kids be able to play on top of a propane tank that's buried underground? And the answer is yes, there won't be any concerns about that. There's a very significant difference between kids playing on a field area and a 16-wheeler driving over a field area. So there will be a 25-foot space to the right of it, where the, the fire department and other transportation can still pass through. But it will also have a nice grassed-off area. And I've discussed, hopefully we'll get grass to grow. And I told Christina, if not, we'll look into some turf. It's a small enough area where that might be affordable. But those are, those are the small changes to the plans. But everything is still moving forward on good timeline.
All right, great. Okay, any school committee issues? Or things people would like to speak about?
I have something.
Okay, go ahead, Erin.
And I, my phone just died, so I had a picture to show you. There are some lawn signs being produced by a local company that say thank you to healthcare workers, essential workers. It's, I had a picture of it to show you guys. Maybe you've already seen it. It's got the Red Cross on it, and it says thank you. And then there's another one that has the American flag, and it says, even a part in it together. And I was just wondering if it was something, I believe it's two for $32. And I was wondering if it was something we could entertain, putting a set at each school, or in, in for Millville at the end near their, their sign, kind of like a message from us to the community. And I wanted to show you guys a picture. I don't know if it's something we would have to vote on to spend the money.
I don't think, I don't think that i- if it's of that magnitude that the committee would have to vote on it. That's certainly something that boosts morale for the faculty and for the community. So it falls in line with things that we are able to use public funding to purchase. So Dr. DeFalco and I can speak to you offline, Erin, and we can definitely look further into that.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have, I have something real quick. Go ahead, Tammy.
Tammy, go ahead.
You're good, you're good, Wendy.
I just want to celebrate the middle school for a minute, and just put out that, you know, they're sending individual messages for people who are doing all the work, all the students who are doing the work. And they're sending information that, you know, as a working parent, you, I'm hoping for the best. And, you know, when I do get an email of positivity and saying, you know, your child was successful, you know, I appreciate it. So I just wanted to, to give a shout out, you know, to the middle school for, for taking the time to actually send out information to parents. I think it's important. I mean, we get a lot of information, we're getting a lot of communication. But, you know, it's short, and it's sweet, and, you know, in this time, in this state, it's just, you know, it's, it's difficult as a parent, it's difficult as, as, you know, whatever it is that you're in right now, and even the profession that you're in, those little things just mean a lot. So, you know, shout out to the middle school. And I have been seeing it, so I appreciate that.
Thanks. Tammy?
And I just wanted to add to the sign, sign, available signage, parent, and I can't remember, I think it's Miss Taft, and I'm sorry if I'm incorrect, has some, created some signs to support our seniors also. So if there are any senior parents who haven't seen it, they can reach out, and I can put them in touch with the person who has some, is making some signs to support our seniors. And I just wanted to say thank you to our staff, our administration, for all of the, you know, to Wendy's point, just all of these things that are reaching out, whether it's teachers making signs, or doing videos, or I think I've, I've shared all of the, I try to peruse all of the schools' tweet, Twitter pages and stuff, and share with the Blackstone Millville page. All of those, like, just videos of our kids doing work and those things are really, they're going a long way for, for people. And I wanted to thank the teachers and staff who are making those kinds of things to get us through this, this, this time where we can't see each other, but we can acknowledge that the great work. So thank you to all the teachers and all of that for those reach outs. We appreciate it.
And, and I guess I will echo that as well. I don't think that the teachers understand just how important it is to these students to just even see their face. You know, even if, even if it's just for two minutes, to see their face. It's just kind of very exciting to them. I mean, they're not seeing anybody but their parents. And so they see their teacher, or they see another friend on that video screen. It's, it's, it's the contact for the day. And even us introverts in the world need some contact every now and then. So I don't know that everybody knows how important that is. But I think if the students, they might not tell you they like this, but they will, in the long run, appreciate every moment of being connected to their teachers and their friends. So I do thank everybody for that, that effort. I, Jesse told me, we have not had anybody call into the number for public forum. But if we can give a few more seconds, and the phone number was on the live stream and on Facebook, if anybody wanted to call into this meeting.
Until then, do we sing the Brady Bunch song?
We could, and everybody's.
That is awesome.
But our next meeting is scheduled for May 14. Yeah, at this time, potentially live. But I was asked by a committee member to consider switching the time of the meeting, if we are going to do it virtually. Perhaps earlier in the day is, is better for people. You know, 6 o'clock hits around dinnertime, maybe for some, I'm not sure. But does anybody have any feelings one way or the other about timeframe of virtual meetings? Should we be virtual still?
I can't do it until after work. I believe that's similar to Tammy. So 3:30 would be my earliest.
I can't do it until after 4:00.
Yeah, I'm usually in class till 4:00 as well.
Okay. So leave it at 6:00 or move to 4:00?
Plan 4:30.
I say 4:00.
Is that too tight for you guys finishing up?
If we're home.
Yeah.
What's the date? What is the date of our next meeting?
May 14.
That's a long time.
Yeah, well, we didn't have a, we don't have a second one in April usually because of the April vacation. We don't have an April vacation, so.
So we could possibly be back together?
We could potentially. So we can have a tentative, we, we can post as we get closer. But if people feel strongly one way or another, you can just let me know.
I'm okay with 4:30.
Me too. Okay. So tentatively plan May, Jason and Matt, does that work for you guys?
Yeah, absolutely. Whatever you all want to do. Yep.
Jesse? Does it work for Jesse?
Oh, Jesse, does it work for you? You'll have to give me a thumbs up. He says yes.
Yes.
Jesse says yes. Okay. Jesse, someday we'll get you on camera. So May 14, potentially 4:30 if we're virtual. Oh, there's my husband, if you'd like to say hello.
Everyone.
And if we're back to business as usual, which I don't know what that means, it would still be live at 6:00. So we will let everybody know. But if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. Thank you very much. And Jesse, you can exit us from the meeting.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night, everyone.
Everybody, night.
Good night.